How are our, how are, oh, there they are. There we go.
Any announcements or reports?
No, sir.
All right, then, item number four, approval of the minutes. Commissioners, all of you have been, have received the, um, planning, um, meeting, meeting minutes from March twenty-seventh. Are there any changes, additions, corrections, deletions to the minutes? Hearing none, the Chair will entertain a motion to accept those meetings, minutes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting for March twenty-seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? All righty, item number five, no public hearing, so item number sixty, old agenda item, the design guideline updates for Highway fifty-four overlay district.
On this week's series of our... We are back, I just wanted to remind everybody that this has been a, um, a long and thorough process. We met, uh, twice in February, twice in March, and we are, um, here tonight because we had some public comments that we wanted to make sure that we incorporated into the document before it got, um, a recommendation from your, this body. Um, the first is, we changed the title to three E point four. We changed it from golf carts to alternative modes, and, um, and then changed the should to a shall statement. Crosswalks and ADA requirements are required by law, so, um, the, the shall statement is, is a bit, it's redundant, but it's important to make sure that folks know upfront it's going to be required. And then, um, had fun changing some, and it really was, I'm not being sarcastic, I had fun, uh, looking up at the different kinds of plants, uh, that are native, and we, we used the resource, the UGA Extension Office. Uh, they have a great landscape architecture school there, and so they put out a lot of helpful handouts. And, uh, so, uh, with the intent of removing that Bradford pear, removing the invasive species, and adding native species. And then, the final question that came up was around this idea of murals and concern that they could be, uh, become rather advertisements rather than artwork, and where's that line? Uh, we did check with the city attorney, and obviously, if we, it's, it's a free speech issue, and so it has to be, if we allow it, allow one type, we, we have to allow another type. But I did want to bring up that this has been in the ordinance, allowing murals has been, obviously, we have several in the city, and we have some, uh, very positive examples, and, and it has been allowed in the city for some time, so it's not new as a part of this document. We also, uh, had a conversation with the city manager about the recommendation for the Arts Committee, very supportive of that, very supportive of creating or re-establishing, uh, committees throughout the city, not just the Arts Committee, but, but he just couldn't make it happen before this document has to go to the City Council. And so, there are efforts and working on it to make it happen. And so what I was suggesting to you is to go ahead and approve this document, but making very specifically a recommendation from this body to create that Arts and Culture Committee. Uh, that is, that is it, those are the, uh, the changes that have been made, and, and it's ready for your consideration and recommendation.
Okay, um, it looks like, now, I wasn't at the last meeting, but from what I read, it looks like you've incorporated everything, I guess, um, let me open it up to the commissioners to see if they're, um, satisfied as well that everything's been incorporated. Commissioners, any thoughts or comments? Does everything seem to be incorporated that we talked about? Yes, sir.
One thing, just a, just a comment, um, the Arts Committee, sounds great. I just wonder if there's a way that we can push it, just to make sure it doesn't get lost in everything, if there's a specific way that it could be highlighted.
Well, certainly having it as part of your recommendation, then it's not coming from staff, it's coming from an appointed body. Having conversations with your elected officials, the folks who appointed you to this body, is another way that you all have that communication with them. But, you know, ultimately, the, the elected body is going to be the one who's going to decide what executive, um, man, what the city manager's priorities are.
So, just to follow up on that, Robin, what, what, what does that, the recommendation look like that goes to City Council about, we recommend, we're recommending?
So, um... And if I can add to that, like, is there, would there be a deadline, like, when would it be done?
Again, what the priorities are for, um, the city manager are determined by his, his determination as well as, as City Council's, and so, um, there's no way to force a deadline on them, if, if that's the question. The recommendation, and I'm glad you asked, because there's new software that the city is now using to create packets, and, um, and as a result, the memos are all going to have the same format, and at the very top of that memo, it says "recommendation." So that is the first thing they're going to read, is that recommendation. And then after that section is the discussion section, um, and then budget impacts. So, the first thing that they're gonna read, even before they know what the item's about, is going to be your recommendation.
So also, um, my sense is, because I've seen a lot of the council meetings, that you're gonna present at that time for council when this comes up, and, so you'll have an opportunity to, if they didn't read it, you know, e- e- express our interest in, in that as, as a recommendation, correct?
Yes, sir, at the public hearing.
They should see it in, in writing, but then as you present it to them, it should also be presented, correct?
Yes, sir, absolutely correct.
Okay.
Great.
Any other thoughts, comments, or we're ready to put this one to bed? Now, we did have, um, Keith, remember, he gave us, um...
I wanted to, so I, I just quickly saw these. So the first one is about specific short-term and long-term auto and cart parking requirements for the city ordinance. I can certainly make that change in the document. I just wanted to remind folks that this is a layer on top of our ordinance, so if it's in our ordinance but not mentioned in the overlay district, it's still required, whether or not we say it in the overlay or not, they still have to do the requirements of the ordinance. The same goes with page two for the ADA accessibility standards, that's a federal law, that's required. And then he, it looks like he's got some more recommendations for the, um, native, looks like the... Oh, I see, adding, uh, specifically saying native trees and native shrubs, and then removing, I don't know how to say it, liriope and purple winter creeper. I can definitely make those changes before we...
Yes, just for a real quick comment, uh, Robin, I, I appreciate everything you've done in, in, in this, uh, arduous process. The parking, the general parking, I thought was important, to have a parallel to what you, the way you state it for the bike and, uh, alternate mode parking, the same reference. And, and, and I see what's happening sometimes around some of the different shopping areas, I see long-term parking happening, or alternate commercial parking that I don't think was ever intended. I see semis and building companies and campers parking in front of the old Kmart, and that's not actually technically permitted, but they do it, you know, because no one's there. And, and I don't think that we would want to create a truck park out in, out in the West Fifty-four overlay, so I just think it's just keeping, keeping the general spirit, driving to the, uh, the soon-to-be comprehensive ordinance.
Semis and RVs, by the way, are not permitted, and so if they're parking in Kmart, we will send code enforcement out there, which, they make visits regularly.
And, and, and that was my, my point about the landscaping, is just highlighting, because you've now have a, a goal and a policy in the comprehensive plan update that says it's not consider, the word is require, native plans. So, so that by highlighting those, it makes it clear, and then also providing them a recommendation for them to consider alternatives, not saying, and, and this is just about a flexibility, is that there may be a very talented landscape architect hired by somebody, a developer, and they really want to do more than just this concise list. So give them those options within that constraints, and let them be, let them show their innovation to the city, I think that's a great way to be flexible. And also considers, um, lead, um, landscape architecture points, for if, if we ever have a progressive developer or architect that wants to qualify a building or for lead certification under green space and green play and planning, that would also be something of their, their weight. So by being very clear about this, how, you know, and this is the challenge, I guess, taken from the comp plan, how do we translate it into things like ordinances and overlay districts? And this is just my recommendation for a way to consider that, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you for the comments. All right, um, then we'll move on to take a motion to accept, um, the plan as, um, as we have rendered it up to this point. So, uh, the Chair will entertain a motion on, uh, item number PW two-three dash zero-two dash zero-two, design guideline updates for the Highway fifty-four overlay district.
Mister Chairman, I'd like to make a recommendation to accept the design guideline updates for the Highway fifty-four overlay district, PW twenty-three zero-two zero-two, as presented.
And that recommendation is a, uh, motion, correct?
I'm sorry, make a motion, yes, it is a motion, not a recommend, recommend a motion, yes.
All right, is there, is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Uh, any discussion on the motion? Been all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposes? The ayes have it, let me thank all of you, for all of you hard work for, on this item, and staff as well. City Council, we did the heavy lifting for them, so hopefully, hopefully they'll be approv, approving and, uh, and grateful for the work that's been done by the citizens as well as the commissioners. All right, let's move on to, um, new agenda items. Item dash two-three dash zero-four dash zero-one, landscape plan for Guthrie's at two-zero-two-one Commerce Drive. Turn it over to staff.
All righty, this is on, yes, all right. All right, so most of you are familiar with the project site, which is next to McAllister's on, um, Highway seventy-four north, there in the yellow box, um, with the GC right in the middle. It's at two-oh-two-one North Commerce Drive, as he said. Uh, the property is located in what we call the Bridge Park Commercial Subdivision. It was platted in nineteen ninety-eight with a thirty-foot landscape buffer along Highway seventy-four, and this platted buffer takes precedence over our typical, uh, sixty-foot buffer requirement that we, that we usually have along the arterial highways. So the buffer area that was established across the parcel during the development of McAllister's measures approximately thirty-six to thirty-eight feet. Before I, oh, let's move on to the next slide there. All right, so before I get into some of the details of the calculations, I just want to point out a few things on the plan here. As you're looking at this slide, note that the, the open circles and my little, oops, my little, um, key down here, if it's an open circle, uh, white in the middle, it indicates an existing tree, and the shaded circles in, indicate a new tree. And you may have noticed when you reviewed the plan, that there are some notes about replacing some dead trees, that's why you see some shaded circles on the McAllister's side here. This is McAllister's, just for reference, and this is the new Guthrie's building. For instance, here's some shaded trees down here, one over here. Then I, uh, let's see, so that's the dead trees. I also want to remind you that when McAllister's was developed, they were required to plant along the whole frontage of the property. So that's why you see some circles all the way over here, uh, in front of Guthrie's, the open circles, which mean existing trees. Okay, so, uh, moving into the calculations, since this is one parcel, uh, the calculations are for the overall parcel, not just on the Guthrie's portion. And based on the total amount of impervious surface, which is forty-four thousand, four-hundred-and-nineteen square feet, the requirement is for a hundred and thirty-three caliper inches of canopy trees, eighty-nine caliper inches of understory trees. And the landscape plan is proposing a hundred and thirty-six inches of canopy trees, and ninety caliper inches of understory trees. Both of those numbers exceed the required amount, and therefore, no tree fund contribution is required. The plan here, you'll see those, uh, pictures showing the variety of tree species that are being proposed. I did want to tell you about, uh, another situation, so because the parking lot is surrounded by a retaining wall, it's, uh, difficult for the applicant to comply with the ordinance that requires the perimeter of all parking lots to be landscaped with evergreen shrubs planted in staggered rows. So this, that wall starts here and basically goes all the way around the property, and it's pretty tight up to the parking area. The proposal includes the staggered rows along the back, so there is a staggered row, so two rows of those shrubs back here, and there's a single row down the side here, but unfortunately, in the front, there is no room for those, for those trees, I mean, sorry, shrubs. And staff is of the opinion that if shrubs were planted along the bottom of the wall in front here, um, they wouldn't meet the intent of the ordinance requirements, which is to provide screening for the cars in the parking lot, so we feel, um, the existing trees in the landscape buffer out front and along the side of the property provide ample screening for the parking lot. That being said, staff is the, of the opinion that the proposed plan meets the requirements of the city ordinances, and recommends approval of agenda item twenty-three dash zero-four dash zero-one, Guthrie's landscape plan.
All right, thank you, is the applicant here? Can you step up to the mic and give us your name and who you represent?
Good evening, my name is Todd Simmons with Freeland and Kaufman, we're the civil engineer and landscape architecture firm that's worked on both the, uh, McAllister's and the Guthrie's projects. I've been before this board a, a number of times through, through the years. Appreciate you all hearing us, enjoyed working with Laura and staff, and, uh, really just here to answer any questions you guys might have, so...
Thank you, Mr. Simmons, so let's just open it up for questions from the commissioners.
Um, I guess the only question I have, maybe I wasn't here when the site plan was presented for Guthrie's, but what, um, what was the original purpose of, of the retaining wall? Was that just for design, or...
There's actually a, um, electric easement. If, if that wall's at thirty-eight feet, there's an electric easement that comes to thirty-five feet, right? So, so basically, it was, the wall was needed so that we wouldn't have fill that kind of encroached on, on the electric easement, so kind of in, in combination with what makes this site so tight as it relates to that, is, is that electric easement, um, is what necessitated the wall to begin with.
Okay, that, that was really my only question, was to confirm that.
To my right?
No questions. No questions.
Just curious if you agree with staff that, um, the, uh, the, the existing buffer is enough to shield the cars from, uh, from the road there, in your opinion?
Uh, yes, I would agree, I, I know, I noticed it on, on my drive in, so, um, I think, I think that's something Peachtree City does a good job of.
Excellent, yeah, just want to put that in the record, thank you, no, no further questions.
Yeah, I don't have any, so we'll open it up for comments. Commissioner Ridenhour, you have any comments?
No, no comments in particular.
Commissioner Hamner?
No comments.
Just, it looks like an excellent plan, no further comments.
Right.
And no further comments.
And none for me as well. All right, then, um, the, um, Chair will entertain a motion for item number two-three dash zero-four dash zero-one, is there a motion?
Mister Chairman, I motion that we accept, uh, the landscape plan for Guthrie's, uh, twenty-three, uh, oh-four, oh-one, as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposes? The ayes have it, thank you, Mr. Simmons.
Thank you.
All right, and item number two-three dash zero-four dash zero-two, the conceptual site plan for the manufacturing facility at seven-eight-two Highway seventy-four, and turn it over to staff again.
All right, well, as, um, as the Chairman just mentioned, here we are at seven-eight-two, Highway seventy-four south, it's near the intersection of, um, Gardner Park here, zoned GI, and it is, the proposal is for a new manufacturing facility, uh, and the properties surrounding the parcel are all zoned GI. Oop, I got stuck there, there we go. All right, this parcel is part of, um, an industrial park in this area that's called The Park, which was all of that area, all of this area around Gardner Park, these parcels right in here, which I just learned doing this project. Anyway, so the, uh, the site is currently vacant and heavily wooded, the property is seven-point-four-four acres in total. The proposed building is a hundred and twenty-thousand, uh, square feet with sixty parking spaces that are located out front, the, right here, which meets the parking requirement of one space per two-thousand square feet. There are twelve loading docks proposed in the rear, back here, um, stormwater pond down the side here. Currently, there is no access to the property, so a new curb cut is being proposed along with a decel lane from Highway seventy-four. Both the curb cut and the decel lane will require approval from the Georgia DOT. The site abuts Highway seventy-four, which is classified as an arterial, uh, and per section seven-twenty-three of the Land Development Ordinance requires a sixty-foot tree save landscape buffer, as you all know. Then per the ordinance, the buffer may be reduced from sixty feet to fifty feet, provided the developer installs at least ten percent additional caliper inches of trees required for the site by the landscape ordinance. The applicant is requesting to reduce the buffer to fifty feet. Uh, the proposed parking meets this fifty-foot, uh, building and landscape setback, and the building meets the remaining side and rear setbacks. I'd like you to note that there is a thirty-foot power easement that runs across the front of the property, right through here, and that would be part of the fifty-foot, uh, buffer. In addition, since the parcel is located along a major thoroughfare, uh, an additional architectural review from the Planning Commission will be required. Staff is of the opinion that the proposed plan meets the city ordinances and recommends approval of agenda item twenty-three dash oh-four dash oh-two, conceptual site plan for a new manufacturing facility.
Thank you, is the applicant here? Can you step up to the mic and give us your name and who you represent?
Good evening, thank you, Laura.
You're welcome.
My name is Chris Davis, I'm with Davis Building Company, and I'm representing the Developer Dividend Realty.
Okay, do you have anything else to add to the report?
I don't, thank you, Laura, you did a good job.
All right, very good, um, then let's open it up for questions. Commissioner Johnson, you have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Ridenhour?
Question actually to staff, so the sixty foot's being reduced to the fifty foot?
That is the request.
Is the ten percent additional caliper included in with the current trees? Because, did you not say they, they go from a fifty, or sixty to a fifty, did I read that wrong?
So, they will be required, do you want to explain that, am I...
So, if it's approved with that ten-foot reduction, then when we do the landscape plan further down the process, they'll have to add ten percent additional trees, um, caliper inches to their site.
Well, and, and the question really was because of the, I, I know the lot, it's, it's, like you said, heavily wooded. I didn't know if that would be factored into that additional ten percent already with the existing...
Only if they retain some of those.
That's what, that was the question, okay. That's everything.
Okay, Commissioner Hamner?
Yeah, uh, question for staff, um, for the sixty to fifty foot reduction, is that aligned with the, the property on, to the left on here, it looks like it's kind of equal, so I was just curious about that.
The one to the left, so, the one to the left may even be smaller.
They, yes, they, they have a shallower buffer.
Okay. I was just curious, does it...
Commissioner Chris?
It's, it's not, I think their parking comes out this far. See it, right at the edge of it, kind of right?
Yeah.
Actually, now we should probably, ooh, there we go.
They may be at that thirty feet, which is what the ordinance used to say back in the day.
Yep.
All right, Commissioner Chris?
Just a question, uh, for staff as it relates to that reduction in buffer, is there any, um, guidance on where the additional, um, the, the inches, where that should be added when you reduce the buffer?
That is where the Planning Commission discretion comes in, the ordinance doesn't say specifically, but if there's a place that you would like them to be considered, um, you can tell them now, or you can tell them during that plan review, landscape plan review.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, I think that this plan looks fine to me, I just that, you know, if we're reducing the buffer in front, the extra inches or whatever it is, it should also be added to the front, that's just my personal opinion, but, you know, seeing next door being even less of a buffer, is what it looks like, um, I don't think it necessarily, uh, impedes the nature of that area, if that makes sense. Uh, just a quick question for the applicant, person representing the applicant, it's not really relevant, but do you know what's going to be manufactured at this facility?
Yes, sir, um, I can't discuss the, the tenants, but it will be a, a medical manufacturing industry, yes, sir.
All right, and I don't have any questions, so let's open it up for comments, and we'll go with, uh, Commissioner Johnson, you have any, any comments?
I don't have any comments, thank you.
Commissioner Ridenhour?
No comments.
Commissioner Hamner?
Always good to see development like this, so, it's great, thank you.
And Commissioner Chris?
Yeah, likewise, no, no comments except for the fact that, you know, generally speaking, I think when the buffer's reduced, we should recommend having that additional tree space put in that area.
My only comment is I think it's a good spot for this particular kind of business. So it's, uh, I'm fine with it for sure. All right, so, um, the Chair will entertain a motion, um, for item two-three dash zero-four dash, um, zero-two. And that's the conceptual, uh, site plan for manufacturing facility at seven-eight-two Highway seventy-four. Is there a motion?
Mister Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the conceptual site plan two-three dash oh-four dash oh-two, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposes? The ayes have it, thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you.
All right, very good, um, I think that's it.
We do plan on, um, we do have items for the first meeting in May. It does appear, I don't want to call it yet, but it does appear that we may request that you cancel the second May meeting.
All right, very good, anything else for the good of the order?
So, Robin, is that May eighth?
Is, yes, ma'am.
Okay, yes.
All right, uh, well, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.